Across the field. And then, you know, so we're trying to get people up there to get off because we know it's gonna jump the road. And as soon as it jumped the road, the spirit comes.
Poof.
It was gone. I mean, it was off to the races. But that's exactly how wildland firefighters go around.
Trying.
Just like that, it gets into that thick stuff like that, ignites and runs and.
You just wait till your loft catches on fire one day. Come on, let's see the trees.
I'm going that way.
Yeah.
You won't know stuff.
Yeah, cedar trees are just.
That stuff is fun.
It's like, well, it's like pouring oil, oil on the fire, yeah.
But they make a nice noise when they burn.
They do, yes. Yes, they do.
Yep.
Yeah, it's that whistle.
First time, first time you see that, it'll scare you pretty well.
Yeah.
We had a warehouse over by Sezdeck. We had a fire in there years and years ago. Berrels got hot and when we went in, they were exploding and jumping out of there. Well, Isaacson and I just stood there and went, yep, we ain't going any further.
Ready, Kerry?
Yep.
Got nine o'clock and we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with Pledge of Legions.
The United States of America. And to the Republic for which this stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Roll call.
Mottler.
Here.
Mottler.
We can't hear you, Phyllis. We know she's here.
Smith.
Here.
Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here. Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none. Phyllis, are you able to? Can we hear you yet? Nope.
Says your mic's on, but we're not hearing you. So, you know, check that.
Yeah. Still nothing, Phyllis.
Try a reboot.
Yeah, maybe. Sign out and sign back in.
Do you want to try and reconnect, Phyllis?
Can we hear Lauren?
Can you?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. It might be on your end, Phyllis. Maybe shut off and restart. Finally.
Technology is wonderful. Okay, well, we're gonna have to move on. Approve agenda, but we need to add the courthouse ventilation discussion at the bottom.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mottler.
Yes, motion passes. Approve minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Uh, Lauren.
Um, I just have, I believe you should have one in your packet. Um, a couple of weeks ago, Benson Pest Management, that is the company that we contracted with to treat our termites. Um, a couple of weeks ago, they sent me a letter that said that our warranty was going to expire um, this month and they wanted to know if we wanted to continue that. Um, the warranty includes a reinspection every year. Um, the fee is $200 annually. Um, and I just wanted to bring it before you guys and say yes or no before I sent this back in. Um, Scott knows about it. I've had discussions with him. Um, so he would be taking over that coordination from here on out, but um, I guess it's totally up to you guys. I don't. It's not that I don't think that the treatment that he did would be not working. I just hate to see like all that money that we already put into it and then just knowing how bad that termite problem was to begin with. I would hate for something like that to happen again. So it's just my opinion, but.
I think it's a good idea to inspect for a few years at least to make sure we don't have a reinspection.
So is it just to inspect or is it to treat also the 200 bucks?
200 bucks?
I believe it. It says reinspection, but I.
I didn't see treatment on there.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't see treatment on there.
But in the original contract, was there, was there a guarantee that there was a kill, I guess?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a warranty. It's a warranty, um. It's a warranty for the original treatment.
So does Scott have that contract then? Or do you?
Yes.
Scott does.
He does too. I sent the same one to him. Yep.
Yeah, I guess I read it as, um, you know, if, if you have this contract and they reinspect and find termites, if the contract is continuous, then um, they take care of the problem. Um, I, you know, I think it's an extension of the original warranty. And, you know, the price, the price is really reasonable.
Yeah, at any rate, I think we should approve this.
Yeah.
I, I'll move approval.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you, guys. I'll get with Scott and send that back in.
Thanks, Lauren. Did Phyllis get back on yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
I saw her try, but.
Uh, are there any visitors to be heard that aren't on the agenda? Hearing none. Um, dissolution of the courthouse jail and law enforcement center facility planning committee. And that's just for us to have something on in the minutes that.
Officially, this is the end.
Yeah, and anything going forward that that, those people that were on the committee might do is as part of another political.
Right. So that's effective today, then? Is that how we should do it?
It will be, yeah.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, have we talked to Steve Waller and someone about this or will this come as a surprise?
Steve's on the meeting.
Oh, he's on the meeting.
I don't think it'll come.
So.
No.
So Steve, this is, this is good with you and the committee's ready for this and?
Absolutely.
All right.
We're ready to move on to the next phase.
Yes, I recall you had mentioned this action or the, the.
When we made our recommendation, I think most of the committee felt that we were done.
Okay.
So we're good with it. Like I said, we're ready for the next phase.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will not be part of the commissioners.
Yeah. We wanna thank, I wanna thank you for your work on that as well as the whole committee. You did a great job.
It, it was a lot of fun. Uh, it was frustrating at times. Uh, Bob Fuller deserves a lot of credit for that first phase, getting a lot accomplished and I'm just sorry we didn't get everything done last year, but I'm much more confident right now that we will succeed this time in getting this project moving forward. So. And I thank you for the opportunity to do this. It was a lot more fun than I anticipated.
We have different definitions of fun.
Yeah, well.
One of, another one of those good retirement projects, eh?
Yes. Well, I started before I retired.
Yeah, that's true.
But yeah, it's, it's been a good one. I will, uh, hopefully come November, sit back and prop my feet up and do what I had planned to do when I start retirement, which is nothing. So, but. But yeah, I'm, I'm very, I think the committee is very comfortable with the dissolution process and we thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion passes. We're moving way too fast here. Everybody get to see the vouchers?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll take a motion on those.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes. CCOG contract and resolution.
Yeah, so I.
I mean, I can tell you from the, the CCOG meetings this spring what it's about and that is that T has become a population of first class municipality. Um, and therefore gains a seat on the board in order to keep the board's membership, um, uh, stable, there'll be one less community representative as T moves from having community representation to uh, to full, uh, full board membership. So it's, other than that, the contract's exactly the same.
Oh.
Isn't this your chair?
No, it's the older, littler one. We don't know what happened to it, do we?
Yeah.
So this doesn't have anything to do, um, Betty, with what we pay them annually?
No.
This is just.
No, no.
This is just a reorganization.
Exactly. Exactly. This is just a board membership issue with T now taking more responsibility.
Does this require an action then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I need a, a motion for me to sign it.
Move aside.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes. Do you want me to sign this one, Kerry, or do you want a different copy signed?
Oh, you can sign that one. There's 12 individual signature pages that you have to sign for that. Plus the resolution.
I know, I should have believed it.
Yeah, I, I guess it's because they give a copy to, uh, every signatory, so that's.
We'll do that after the meeting.
Phyllis, I have a packet printing for you, so we'll bring that down in a minute.
Okay. Everything was said it was working, but I had absolutely no sound.
Huh.
It goes along with Eric's suggestion that we put in the budget for new computers.
Yeah.
I'll be right back.
It's probably about time to purchase some used from Dakota PC, probably what, four, four or so, five years ago, maybe, so.
Close to five, you know.
They're probably, you know.
Yeah. Eight years old. Beyond ten. When I took mine in.
Yeah. Yeah, they're getting pretty old.
I wonder what they did with your chair, Phyllis. Uh, we're gonna, Rod, are you ready with just the right away applications and gravel purchase? It was on.
We kind of decided we're scaling them on, um, for people when they show up, so it should be on.
Good morning. Have, um, do you write, uh, I don't know, you wanna do one at a time? They're both were clay.
We can do them at the same time. One's on Saginaw and one's on 306.
Yeah, and I took one of these. Boring doing what they usually do and I recommend you approve it.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve both.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? This one on 306, is that the one we did for Clay Rule Water last week?
Uh, for you. Uh, Union Electric, I believe.
That's what this one is.
This is Clay Union.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I have Clay Rule Water.
This is ours, our thing says Clay Union Electric.
I grabbed the two wrong duties, what we did last week. Yeah, it's that basically at the same place.
Okay.
Just, I believe they're taking down a power line. And Saginaw, we, we did that also, but there's too much stuff in the redways, so we gotta run. I mean, there's too much stuff out in the trees, so we gotta run the wire from like, um, Isaacson's, just lowways of Isaacson's up to, I believe, with Shane O'Connor's in the East Ditch.
Okay.
But yeah, I love those. I recommend you approve those also. The one up on 306, I believe they're taking the overhead power line off and bored under the road there.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes. Yeah, there should be, I signed too. So now we've got gravel purchase from Mark Works.
Yeah, um. Picked my attention last week. Well, it's been a couple of weeks, but I hadn't been a little worried. But at Fleegs, North of Fleegs on 50 in Yankton, um, they have five piles of gravel and there's only one left. Coleman, um, Hurst up here at Ready Mix, everybody already bought a pile and they called me to see if I'd be interested. 10,000 ton, um, at 7.40, it's a little higher than what we paid four years ago for the 30,000 over there, but of course, stuff just keeps going up. But anyways, about 35 miles closer than here you could get. It, it's, it's kind of a small pile, but 10,000 tons, 10,000 tons. And so on that other sheet, I had, uh, in a budget that you guys already approved, line number six in the hot mix patching. You know, we do an average of 6,000 ton. If we have a lot of breakup in this year, you know, we don't have a lot of breakup, so I figured I could dig, um, I think it was 120 120 tons off of that. So we, cause I feel the gravel roads need just as much as attention and the gravel's getting pretty hard to come by. Every time I see someone crushing, it's already sold before it's even crushed, so. And I thought this would be a good opportunity and I got the money in the budget, just have to take a little off the patching, which this year we actually get to fix some roads that, you know, not just repair them, we get to kind of move forward and the patches we patched before, we can do in between the patches. So I think this is, I think it's a good deal and I'd, I'd like to purchase it. We got about 20,000 ton on that round right now, which looks like a lot, but once we start hauling, it goes in bigger.
Pretty, pretty good quality stuff then?
Yeah, that is. I can buy this off of Yankton County, also has a pile. So they got, they got all the bidding papers and, you know, so we can buy off their bin, so I don't have to worry about that either.
So you haul that yourself?
Yeah.
Do they load it for you?
No, we take our own. So.
What about the pit south of the coffee cup? Is that Mike Coleman's?
No, that first rate or, um, he told me to and they, I don't know what they're doing there, but that's gravel's already spoken for. They're not selling many. There must be some project coming up, which I don't know, I'm new about it or not. He didn't disclose it to me anyway, but it just wasn't. Cause I talked to Jared from Yiddin County, he, he talked to him too and yeah, they weren't in the market to sell any.
Cause the one on top of the hill, that's Mike's.
Right.
And then this one's down.
Yeah, and here that pile over there, I mean, it's good gravel, but just it's the quality that this over here is. And we usually get gravel off of that pit quite a while since when I first started, but it was washed and wasn't worth anything, but now they're crushing it and it's.
Oh, so that, that pile over there's better. Cause I know Mike, that one day he hauled this load and he said, we need some rain to make this stuff really work.
Yeah, yeah, and some of it, you know, I mean.
Which you didn't have.
The best gravel we got in the pile ain't gonna work if we don't get some rain that time. That, it, that doesn't really matter though. But, so I, I think it's a good chance to get a pile gravel. You know, in a couple of years, we're gonna have to be looking for something. And I keep looking for property and where we can purchase, but somebody always is way ahead of me. Especially if I even reached out to a couple realtors and they aren't even interested in looking crazy for gravel. They don't care if there's gravel under it. They want to sell it.
Mike is, we need a motion? Yeah. I'll make a motion that we, we purchase this gravel for 74,000.
Yeah.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes. I have one question. I had one of the, we bid that first in the ditch, I have one of the guys come back. Wanted to know who got the bid. Do we, we don't send anything out telling them that they didn't get the bid?
No, we haven't.
Okay.
But we, we can, when we bid our material bid, they always send us an acceptance.
Okay.
Or I think it's just basically acceptance.
Yep.
But usually, you know, they call and I just tell who, who got it and they, quite a few were, I don't know, four of them called and asked me about it.
Okay, Dan Wyner.
Oh.
Yeah. He talked to Joe the other day and he called him back and brought him joy. He said, who got that bid? He wanted to know how close he was. Joe said, you weren't close enough, though.
No, I, yeah, so. Yeah, I didn't even see. I just know you said, uh, 10,000.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all I had.
Yeah, and I don't know if we could do that, like usually on that Yankton ditch thing, I called them right back after we opened the bins. So I told them what they were and a couple of guys asked me for the copy of it, just something I do or if it's not, so.
Okay. Not proud.
But that, I guess. That's all I have, cause I will.
Yeah, we gotta wait on the other stuff yet.
Okay, we, we can't go into ditch board or are you?
We can do ditch board.
Yeah, we gotta wait so long.
9:35.
So I got the revised.
We, we gotta go into ditch board. Move to go into ditch board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We're in ditch board.
So I got the contract from Brad revised contract for children split up. Um, and I'm sorry, it just, oh, did you put that in or back to this?
Yep.
Okay, so you see the one where Clay Creek clean out and then the beam portion. The amount below, so that's what we were asking for. And this is for the Clay Creek, uh, flyover. What was he?
Yeah, 30 hours of drone work. And 21 hours of, uh, looks good to me. Need to approve that.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? So this is for the work that's been done or is this for the, what's gonna be bid out? So are you gonna break that up into phases? I mean, so we can, in case we run out of money?
Yeah, just, just like before.
Okay.
By mile and, and, and so I have a few months portion of it, um, by mile and a separate set of, yeah, one set of plans, but I'll have a separate set of bid items or separate pay items, FEMA only. And then the rest of it, then that will be by mile. So if you, if you wanted to, we need to slice off a mile to we. Just like last time.
Okay.
So there are, there are really two, um, um, scope is, scopes of services here.
There should be exactly the same. I, I, ju- just for accounting reasons, that way when, when FEMA wants to know how much is spent of the past, I, I separated them out this way and it's just easier.
Yeah, so one of them is like 55 hours of drone work and the other is 30. Yeah. So what, or, it was, so did the motion include both? Yeah.
Yeah, county parks, 55.
And, and what I did is I just took the last one, I just pro rate. This one's longer, I just.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes.
And I do have another little tidbit just for information. So I got a call from, from one of the Yankton County commissioners that they, they want to do some like right, just like a two miles into their county. Uh, well, actually in, in Clay Creek ditch and then on the ancient clay, they wanted to look at that too, and I was gonna do that at the same time. And we could talk about what the findings are, but what I was thinking would be one bid letting, you know, we'll tie those together, cause it is mostly better for them because they have a very small project and you have much bigger ones, but usually, usually more, the unit prices go down and, um, and I haven't touched bases with them here in a bit, but, um, I'll, I'll visit with you if that, that one's for it. I don't know if they're gonna do it or not yet. But they asked me if, if that's something you could do or that, 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 that my company could do, and I can't.
Yeah, I know on the Clay Creek one, we can do that at, they wanna do that one at the same time.
Right, and then he did ask me too about the Yankton miles and the Yankton clay, just on their side of the border, which we, like I said, we'll do them all. And we come out here with the drone, do them all and then then it's, they don't have to save a bunch of.
They're, they're part of Yankton Clay, it's kind of a forest too.
Is it?
I think so, yeah. Last I was up there, you know, I wasn't looking specifically at that, but there was quite a batch of trees down in Oregon.
Are you?
And then you know our specifications on that, that they gotta mulch.
Yeah.
Yeah. Instead of dig.
Yeah.
So.
So I, so I thought we'd do something similar to, to last year. We'll, we'll, we'll get it, we'll get it flowing and I'll get my arms around, we'll get everything with that out. I'll, I'll come in and talk to you.
Sounds good.
So did you get that? Then I said, I'll, for you guys to okay on the Yankton clay. I know you got back. Everybody else.
Oh, yeah.
Before I, that mile and a half of tree removal.
Yeah.
I sent out a specific.
Well, so how's that gonna work with what Yankton wants to?
Totally different. This is a, this is the one I was just.
Right.
I had no idea about any of that. So you sent me out there to look at that mile and a half?
Mm-hmm.
And I, I had the first draft and it didn't have mulch, you wanted to. And I, I had the first draft, and it didn't have mulch, you wanted to mulch, so I did a different one, they can't bury or. Burn, they have to mulch them, if they cut the trees, they have to treat the stumps, and was waiting for. Waiting for, um, response before I put a bid thing together to send out, have four guys interested.
So we're not gonna be able to tie those two projects together then?
Well.
Cause you're gonna bid, he wants to bid this one now, right?
I bid that one now.
But I don't have any, I gotta have permission to send out the.
Right. Right, but Yankton County's.
If you wanna do it all to the same, I didn't know anything about that.
Right.
This is the one I've been working on for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I didn't know about that either.
Yeah. But I didn't know if that looked good enough.
Yeah, I thought it would do.
Yeah.
That's why I said that.
I just need a bid date from whenever Kerry wants to have it, and I'll send it back to those four guys if you wanna email me. Can you add to that sheet just the bid date? I don't think I need to know the published date.
No, I think we could. Like, open bids on the first meeting in May.
May third? Nine thirty?
So speaking of May third, I'm gonna be in here for the county spring workshop. Do you wanna have the meeting that day, and have Nicole take minutes, do you wanna move it to Thursday?
What if we move the April one to Thursday? Cause I'm not gonna be here on that Tuesday. And we can combine those two meetings.
May one.
Right, but if we went. So the last, on the twenty-sixth of April, I won't be here, but we could combine those two meetings into a Thursday one. We could split, if you wanted.
Okay, so do it like April twenty-eighth instead of the twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
And then.
If, if you want.
Get that first meeting in May.
Yeah.
We could do that, and then we could just open bids for that, then the, the. The calendar for me, but the, the week after that first weekend. Second week.
So on the tenth, cause we, we can't make the twenty-eighth, right?
I don't think so, for publishing out, we can, I think it would have to be that next one.
Okay.
Change the second reading of this ordinance to.
Yes.
So is it the third, then, that I put on there?
The tenth.
For that bid opening, the tenth?
Yeah.
Nine thirty?
If we do something on the twenty-eighth, I might have to zoom in from Sioux Falls on that one, but. I promise, I will. It's on a Thursday, so it won't be Boeing Day, McKenna, and hopefully the international garden will be blasting us out again. Remember that.
Yeah.
So, is there any regulations? If I email this out, or does it have to go out by mail?
I email mine.
You email yours, okay. I didn't know if I. Cause I got, it's, we'd rather do it by email.
The guys I talked to. Don't do anything by mail.
The only real legal requirement is that it gets published, so.
Anything else for ditch board?
Move to come out of ditch board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Okay, now we've got the first reading for ordinance twenty-two-two dash zero-seven. Authorizing the Clay County Board of Commission to declare a fire danger emergency, and to prohibit open burning within the county.
Uh, this is the second try of it. After the last discussion, uh, the new version is senior packets, I believe, uh, Andy's on. But he has signed off on it, and Lex is.
So if we wanna burn ban, we have to declare it, or, cause we're, we're not gonna use the red flag?
We are using a red flag and fire weather watch.
Okay, so.
If you all want an extended version, you still have that option.
Okay, so this is just changing what we've had to a different warning system?
Different.
Or.
Warnings and watches of warnings to coincide with the weather systems. Um, like yesterday, you know, Coleman actually called me, wondering why the red flag warnings always ended Yankton. But we were under a fire weather watch yesterday, so it would have been a non-burning day yesterday.
So if you would have called then yesterday, you would have said, do not burn?
Correct.
Yeah.
And that is a requirement at this one house that people call.
It's a, the main difference is that we have a different way of initiating a fire warning. Depends on these red flag warnings, and, uh, other, other ways to, to initiate through the National Weather Service. How we end it could be, we could extend if we wanted to, is what you're saying.
Well, this is.
So much extent, uh, the commission can put in and vote by resolution to have. No matter what the weather says.
Yes, from such date to such date.
Yes.
Okay.
And I sent you all the, the map yesterday. Um, the only county in South Dakota in our area that has an extended ban at. Otherwise, you gotta get more to the central locations for that.
Well, I think it addressed the issues we had, so I moved to approve this.
Yeah. Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Only other thing, was did we? Is there a penalty in here if somebody is burnt? I didn't see that, if there's a.
Penalty?
Excuse me, if somebody is burning when they shouldn't be burning?
It's on the end.
Maybe I didn't see that.
Yeah, I think it's what, thirty, thirty days in jail or a five hundred dollar fine?
I see that, I, I didn't see that, I looked at. Okay.
And that, that is the maximum penalty, so if it's a. Minor infraction, it doesn't have to go to that extent. Does that sound like what you'd like to see too, man, I assume?
Yeah, I, you know, talking with Alexis, you know, current rules that value on this, you know, a lot. We understood a lot of the courts, except, you know, it's a wind on the best, but this would repeat the vendor, obviously, they can escalate in mind. I'm just saying, yesterday, we would have been a fire weather watch yesterday, or, or banned burning, if we had somebody burning out of two hundred and twelve, or sixty-four. That didn't call in, um, they had no burns on that, so, um, that person would have been a violation of the count.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes.
So then.
Oh, sorry.
So then we'll have that second reading on the twenty-eighth, right?
Okay, it doesn't pass, then, we just moved it on.
Right.
Second meeting. Second reading will be the twenty-eighth.
I'll put that on at nine forty-five, since, or, I mean, the other one was May tenth, so we'll do nine thirty. Nine thirty. Yeah, I'll just scan it to browse it.
Thank you.
I think there was two, isn't there? Counting portions of FEMA portions?
Oh.
Yes. Lots of papers in that staff for Travis's time today.
I'll have to find it. Micro-surfacing, project bid opening. Yeah, this one's from Asphalt Surfacing Company out of Sioux Falls. Okay, one million, seven hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty cents. Yeah. This one's from Missouri Petroleum, out of Saint Louis, Missouri. One million, five hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-two cents. When you look at these, Rod, you'll have to see if there's a bond with this one. Oh, okay, here it is, bid bond. This is Aztec, Saint Cloud, Minnesota. And this is one million, three hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and two cents. I believe those three were the only ones, correct, Kerry?
Yes.
You'll just come back at the next meeting and let us know.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, so what, what I'll do is, is I'll pour through those and check them for. Make sure it's correct, and then, um, if it is, I'll. The big work.
In the bottom, in the bottom is there for Aztec, yeah, listen.
And I, and I check for all that, just make sure everything's.
Yeah, yeah.
We've been at that before, correct?
Yeah, they're the ones that.
Doesn't look like it. Thank you.
I think you're released.
I'm gonna skate off to people unless you have any questions. Perfect, I'll be just right.
Thanks to everyone who bid. Oh, I suppose you better wait. Yeah, it is. Whatever. Not yet. Um, Aina, are you on, or are you coming over?
Um. When? A week or so ago, um, this gentleman came in, and he was showing me his tax slip, and I, he, he had a mobile home at the river that he had destroyed. And I, it got moved, so taking it off our records, it got moved to the finished projects, and we didn't get it off. So he is, his mother came in and paid his taxes for him on this mobile home that was destroyed. So I need you to evade it, so we can refund the money to them. So.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes.
Signing. And I think Kerry takes care of it from there.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Tim, are you waiting for anyone else, or are you just here by yourself? Cause we're ahead of schedule, so if you wanted to. Yeah. Wherever you're more comfortable. And the button's up, so you're good. It's, it's on.
Uh, so I'm Tim Schreiner, and I'm the, uh, relatively new chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission, County's, uh, Historic Preservation Commission. And, um, I wanted to come in and introduce myself, we've had a turnover, I think I'm the third chairman in the last year. Jim, because of his health issues, stepped down, Tom Sorensen took over, he was vice chair. I think he's had familial issues, I think some in-laws and so on, okay. So, so he not only sat down, Jim stayed on the commission, but stepped down as chairman, Tom stepped down and stepped off the commission. So everything I want to talk about. So, uh, so they looked around the room, and all the fingers went in the wrong direction.
Last guy's favorite.
No, it would have been worse.
I found out that, you know, the chairman does a lot more work. But anyway, so, um, uh, I didn't really know much about how to work something like that, a couple of years, and so. You know, I did a lot of talking to Liz only, and the state office, and catching Jim whenever I could, and one of the things I found out was that we're really supposed to do an annual report. The state. They don't require it, but they suggested very strongly, and I don't think we have one since two thousand and two. Uh, anyway, and so I thought, well, you know, if we're gonna do an annual report, you probably care about that more than the state does, you should know what we're up to, just. You know, what, what are we accomplishing, what are we doing, just make sure that that's all. Cool, if you will, so, uh, so I've done an annual report, I got an outline on the state, and did an annual report. And if you look at section three, it's, the guts of it are, this is what we did over the last year, um, the projects that we did. One of the things we completed, but we got a little tidying up, is we took all the old equalization records that I know was gonna throw away. And, uh, scanned them, so that we've got them digitized, both for their purposes, and because we love to put them on our website, you know. People be able to look up their property or property they're interested in, and see, you know, when was that drive built? When was the house built, all that sort of stuff, it just, people seem to be interested in, in that, so, anyway, so we scanned all those records, and, uh, we thought we were done. We made one little mistake in the titling of the records, so I'm gonna clean that up, and I've got approval from Liz and the state to, to do that, so that was a big project. You know, we do a newsletter, we, a lot of what we do is we publish, uh, little books and booklets that I hope you all have gotten copies of, I'll see that you do, if you haven't. But, uh, Jim Stone did a thing about a room factory, which was northern town. Evelyn Schlecker did a book about the two Carnegie libraries in town, we're one of the few towns that's up, so they had two. So, uh, that sort of thing, we got the, we went into the council house, and got the fireplace, which has now been reconstructed at the W H R museum. A cool deal, they did a really nice job. Oh, we're just about to publish a redo of the book about the rural schoolhouses in Clay County. And this, so this includes ones that have been torn down, the ones that aren't being used anymore, it's a good historical reference, so that when people. you know, want to look up, they hear their grandmother went to some rural schoolhouse. It'd be nice to have someplace where they can go find out where it was. You know, how long was that, that sort of thing, pictures of it. So we're, we're about to republish that. Working on a redo of the Zon book. We call it the Ron book. It's a little book that shows all the places in Clay County that are on the National Register of Historic Places. And that's not a date. It's over 10 years old now, so I'm redoing it now. And I got slowed down last year because COVID, you know, can't, no face-to-face. Nobody wants you to knock on their farmhouse door and say, hi, I'm somebody you don't know, but I'm here to talk about your house. Anyway, so we'll pick that up again this year. We do our preservation awards every year that we present the Rotary. And we're working on one addition of a house to the National Register. It's called the Tonic House. It's a northwest side of town. And we've added, at the request of the state, we've added the house, that 404 cottage for next year is one of our projects. And that's called the Rootman House. John Flanagan lives in it now. It's the corner of Dartmouth and cottage. So it's 404 cottage technically. It's a Victorian house, beautiful house. But anyway, we're gonna work on it. I'm getting that on the National Register in a strong way in relation to do that. And we're working with the Vermillion Historic Preservation Commission on working with the university to see if we can make the campus a historic district because there's so many historic buildings. I, I personally think it's kind of East Hall, for example, the oldest building campus is not on the National Register of Historic Places. So if we made the campus a district, it would mean that all the buildings that are contributing to that sort of automatically gets placed. Anyway, that's what we've been, that's what we're up to. Hopefully I'll come back every year and give you another one of these and talk about, you know. To look at. Basically, you know, we don't have a whole lot of power, as you probably know. We can't make people do things they don't want to do, but I think it's a good, it's a good way to get people interested in the history of the county to, to know the buildings that are contributing to the history of the county. And so that's one of the major roles I think we play. And being in a university town and having members who have done research, we've managed to publish a lot of history of the county. How would that get done? That's what we're up to. So anyway, there's, that's that. And the other, the only other thing I'd like to bring up is because Tom stepped down, we have an opening on the commission. We did a search and tried to find a new member which we need drastically because we've got three members who have health problems and they're having trouble getting meetings. So my forums are pretty thin these days. So we looked around and found what we think is a incredibly able candidate in Constance Kruger, who expressed a lot of interest in being on the commission. So I don't, because I'm new at this, I don't know what you all, I mean, I just wanted to come here, or I should come here, ask you to approve that, or I don't know. You tell me.
Do we have to advertise for that, Carrie?
We never have advertised it before. We've just usually taken their recommendation and formally approved it.
It's usually been approved after the board has approved. I was on board through by one. And it, once the board approved a member, then it, Jim would come in and say.
Well, Jim likes to ask
After the fact.
Forgiveness rather than permission.
Yes. Just tell us how it was.
So anyway, I'm here to turn it around a little bit and ask you what your, what your pleasure is.
Well, for requirements are to elect one after you have done that. We do that. Otherwise, maybe just a reporting option, that you let us know who you have on board. Is that?
Yeah, I think, I'm a former chair, so, so thank you for serving. So, but I think the formal appointment is up to the commission. It's, you know, it's a statutory thing. It's considered, the commission is a certified local government. And it's the county commission that appoints its members. So we think we need a formal appointment.
That's all we've done.
Yeah, that's, that's why I posted as a question.
Yeah, Jim, Jim always came in and said, this is who we've got.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, so would it be in order to make a motion to approve Connie Kruger?
Well, has, has your board
Yes.
Done it? Okay.
Yes, and she was at her meeting last night, we were meeting, our meeting last night. So she came to witness how we do work and see if she really wanted to answer. She's, she's fine, yeah.
Okay, I made a motion to approve, to appoint Connie to the board.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
There's, on the 20th, I think Jim Stone is giving a tour of the over for the Ollie Crew. And I know that they would be happy to have anyone else join in. And if, no, and if none of us have seen the Thompson exhibit, I think it's, it's worthwhile just.
Oh, it's incredible, the job they did with that.
Well done.
I will check and see. Jim is undergoing immunotherapy.
Yeah.
Because of his lung cancer.
Right.
And he's a little bit out of commission right now, so I'm surprised if he's back on the 20th. I'll check.
Yeah, well, that was arranged some time ago and it may be, you know, I haven't gotten a notice yet that it's been changed.
I should check. I'll check on that and get back to you to tell you whether that's gonna happen or not. Super. He hasn't been at a meeting in a while and I know that's, that's part of the reason is because he's and clearly he doesn't want to be in groups of people. This is a bad time to have immune problems.
Yeah, and Stacy, Stacy at Ollie will want to know too, if there's some question about it. We've had quite a few classes that have had to be either deferred to a different date already in the spring or, or canceled.
Whenever it happens, if you ever get a chance to go over there and see that, they reconstructed that fireplace from, you know, we used to call it Ping House.
Right.
And it's, it's incredible. And Jim is sort of, he's an artisan and it's really nice.
And if you get a chance to have him lead it, it makes a difference too. He's done a good job.
So I'll check.
Yeah.
I was going through files the last couple of days and came up with a disc that's labeled.
Do we still have readers that read that disc?
And that's what I'm asking.
Oh.
Because I don't know, but I have a feeling it's the brown book. Because that's what I was working on. If you're interested, I can give it to you to see if you can find a way.
That'd be great, because then the things that I don't need to change, it'd be nice to not have to read that whole thing, which is what I was planning.
It's either that or St. Agnes, the Washington Street Arts Center book. Both of those were done when I was on.
Yeah, I'd be, and I, and I can probably see if I can make a copy and then I can get the original back.
That's one of the things you might have more access to.
Yeah, I remember, you know, the technology changes so fast that.
Going away, can I put it in?
I have old floppy disks that I don't know what you do.
I was gonna ask where a person could obtain those records, because I, I know my son's got a house that he'd like to check the history, history of its ownership.
Which, you mean the equalization or?
Yeah.
That we were talking about?
Yes.
Well, one of the reasons we did it was so that they would have a digital copies in Ina's office.
Right.
So that, and, and they're probably ahead of us a little bit in terms of access because they're listed by parcel number, which I'll give you a million bucks if you can tell me what your parcel number is, because nobody knows. And so we, that's what we're working on changing, so people can look it up by address. But, but she can look it up because she knows.
Sure.
So, so you can go in there at any time and say, hey, I'd like to check on, you know, 122 South Yale and.
Yeah, yeah, I was hoping for the easier, easier access like you.
Well, that's what we're getting.
Yes.
Oh, she heard me.
Because there was a different discussion.
Yes.
But yeah, we're having a lot, some issues with that file. And our IT people said it's because they're dug down too far into, there's too many files for us to open because they're not scanned in as one document. Each page is a separate doc.
Separate file, yeah.
So it gives us way too many files. So we're gonna, gonna have to go back in and renumber everything.
And, and I've talked to the state about using our grant money to do that and they've approved that. So I'm gonna, I'll come talk to you in a little bit.
Okay, all right. I didn't mean to interrupt, but I just heard part of the discussion.
I wasn't involved when they got this started. That's my excuse, but we should have designed it a little bit differently, so we.
The rural areas are good.
Yeah, yes.
It's a city that is a definite issue.
Yeah.
And where might I deliver or send the disc?
Austin Woodmore House? Austin Woodmore House?
Well, I don't really go over there much, but I don't know. You, if you want my address, I'll give it to you. If you want me to come and see you, I'm happy to do that.
Either or.
Okay. Where do you live?
Two, two West Bloomingdale, which is the historic district. Okay.
All right, I'll give you a day to make sure you found it.
Oh, it's right on top. What to do with it?
Give her another day and it'll be on the bottom.
Yeah.
And I didn't, I, I think you all got a copy. I don't know if Carrie or Drew or anybody puts a copy on file anywhere. I took a copy of the library. Of all the libraries, you have Shell County.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jim.
Nice job.
Luke, are you ready? So if you want to sit or you want to stand, whichever one you want to do.
Go ahead then.
Yeah.
All right, thanks for cutting on me. So we moved over to the Vermillion Police Department. And just kind of coming to find out direction from you what process I need to go through to get approval for a mural on the Dakota Street Bridge. So a little bit of background with it. Another officer with our office, Chip Moser, he and I both have training and, you know, some, some field experience with crime prevention through environmental design. So there's a, there's a lot of angles to that that kind of training. Public Guard is one of them though. And the Dakota Street Bridge, we've had that tag with graffiti a lot over the years. I worked with the Parks Department several years ago. And they kind of just took care of it. I don't know how they did that, but they ended up painting over the graffiti under there. That's, you know, probably, probably 10 plus years ago when we, when they did that. I don't know what the process was back then. I was working with their faculty at the time and he's the lawyer with the city. So rather than just trying to cover it up and create a new canvas, Chip and I have been kind of looking at that area and seeing what we can do to improve it and try to deter it next time. That's where the crime prevention through environmental design cuts in. So Public Guard, and that can be, you know, statues or murals really comes into play because, especially if it's done correctly, using a local artist, they create that ownership. People have a tendency to leave that stuff just by the very nature of creating that ownership. Something else we're looking to do is work with the Parks Office and see what we can do, what what we can do to kind of spruce up that cellar or north side of the underneath the bridge there by the walkway to try and deter people from going up under there, whether it be landscaping or whatever. So we have, we did meet with a muralist at USD this she's been busy with classes and stuff, but it sounds like she was involved with the muralist downtown. She has far more experience than Chip and I do with murals in general. But she also has specific training in her educational background working with communities and leading the process to the right point, involving right people to create that sense of ownership and really limit the likelihood of that mural being defaced in any way. So she did offer a proposal here a week or two ago it was now. And what she is proposing is trying to cover up for the current graffiti is, is tagged up underneath the bridge. That area was the area we originally kind of talked to her about as a place of mural. So her direction that she'd like to go is just covering that place up and then actually putting a mural out on the pier that's in the water. So anyhow, that's kind of where we're at right now and beginning stages. I've talked to a couple of organizations around town about potential funding. So we're really in the infancy stage of, of the process right now, but ultimately we've got to get permission from owners of the canvas first. What brought me here today, seek approval from you guys, if that's what we need to do. I just need to know that process. I suppose at some point we'll have to formulate, you know, a group or something to receive the funding and you know how that's gonna work.
Rod, do we have any maintenance planned on that bridge?
We just did the surface, you know, a couple of years ago, fixed this out, cleared that washout. So no, nothing right at the moment, but I think it'd be a great idea.
There's a little approachwork too at that time.
Yes.
On the solid side, yeah.
Because we painted that, like you said, 10 years ago. We had to buy that aquatic paint because the pier actually had water around it at that time. And yeah, that's all, like he said, that's all it did was make a new canvas for the graffiti. And I was just down there about a month ago, looking at some trees that need to be trimmed on top. And yeah, it's pretty terrible underneath that bridge, especially when they have a walkway by it. I agree with him. I think they painted a mural down there that maybe they'd leave alone. I, I don't have a problem with it. I guess it's, that's your final decision, but I talked to a couple other counties, they've done it in different places. You know, they just found somebody to come. Apparently you already have somebody in mind to do the mural. They'll, they say I mean, the mural, mural of course has to be discreet and something like that, you know, it'd be the only thing. If she's the one that did one of that, I'll tell you, and that's, that's good, you know. So I mean, that was the only other question I had is, where does the money come from?
That was about.
How much is it gonna cost, I guess?
Was that about, for you to know that we let, as a commission, we went down with you and looked at the underside of that bridge for this same purpose, I think.
Yeah, it might have been more than that. I
Four or five, something like that.
Go advice the past eight months, but yeah, we, it's been a problem since, it's been a problem since I've been to begin. And we, this, the last time the city come and ask us if we could paint over.
Yeah.
You know, so we had our summer help down there. They did the pier. But now the pier, like he says, is dry. They could actually go up, they're probably wet, but but they could get out to that, to the north pier and edge of the river and put something on, because I believe there's graffiti on that also.
Yeah.
You know, just start.
Yeah, so, oh, go ahead. Yeah, so I, I was, I've, I've worked with Amber Hansen from USD when I was on the board of the Vermillion Cultural Association, because they were the sponsors of all those murals, murals, a bunch of those murals downtown. And murals on the old theater building. And the way she works is she works with a community. She's a, she, she's a national leader in, in public art. And she works with the community to, on the design process and then again on the painting process. And she's, you know, she's very, very good at sort of pulling together community themes and developing something very beautiful. So I, I, it's, and when, what she does is she applies for grants from the State Arts Council. Sometimes there's a a match. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and, and she's, she's just, she's really good at. So and, and, and she's, she's just, she's really good at, at figuring, figuring all that out, so. I, I, I'd make a, a motion to approve.
Can I comment?
Yeah.
I would just make sure that anything they do, the, if this is an independent contractor agreement or something in that regard. That the person has proper liability insurance coverage for themselves, any volunteers and anyone else. And or that we run this by our insurance company. Because I do see a mural on the side of a building, a little bit different from a risk and liability standpoint than a bridge. But I would just throw that out there of anything we do going forward, making sure that the. You know, contractors and other individuals that come to do work on our bridges are gonna have professional liability insurance. I would just throw that out there for your consideration.
Luke, do you know when she, when they would start?
So her proposed timeline was trying to organize starting as soon as next month. And she wouldn't actually put the paint until the summer of twenty three.
So they wouldn't be working on the bridge this year then?
No, 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 yeah, and I guess I wasn't looking for a decision, but you know. Seems optimistic that we certainly go that way and, yeah, I would say maybe. Any, any final approval from, from commission here or something, you know, on the design and stuff. Just be involved, so we can set that final save. Approval of what goes up, but, yeah, so she's, her design process is attempting to. Pull in as many high school kids as she could, it sounded like, and then. Ultimately, the actual work team would include the small group, I think five or six high school students. And that's, that's really where the ownership gets created in the, in the mural itself is just.
Maybe she could pull in some of those original artists that are already freelancing down there.
Probably what you look for.
Well, they're not gonna.
Destroyed their own work, right, but number two, for several years after that, somebody's gonna know that kid. So that's, yeah, that's where all the ownership really ties in. Another, you know, and another idea that she had that helps. Deter some of the tagging activities, giving them a space, so you know, her point was this has became their space. You know, whether anybody wished that or not, but she said there are other cities out there that. Actually poured a concrete wall in the middle of the park and made that canvas for the kids to come and have at it. So we'll check, Chuck and I will work with Parks. See if it's something that we can try to do too. Because the, one of the funding organizations that I spoke with already, you know, their, their concern was, what's protecting the investment? I agree. So we'll, we'll try to do what we can to make sure it doesn't happen.
Is that pathways that are under the city parks? They keep that up, the walkway or correct area, yeah. Cause I always thought that nice, they just had a couple lights under there.
Yeah, like, you know, yeah, so lighting. Some of the other things, so, you know, landscape and vegetation, just trying to keep the tall grass down. To help with that visibility, lighting to help with that visibility, get it out, cause you know, it, it does kind of go down in there. Away from the tree line, and so it is a difficult area to see, you know, from the parking lot or from the doctor, you know, it's. Both sides, they stay pretty concealed, so that, and then. Part of the crime prevention aspect is just attracting users you want, so. You know, not only lighting and keeping higher visibility, but also putting the bench down there or something. To invite somebody to sit there, well, no water. So those, those are things we'll talk with, I think we're meeting with our Parks Department later.
I would. Recommend that you get in touch with the Vermillionary Arts Council. This is right in the line of everything they're looking at doing, so.
So I think the best we can, sorry.
Get in touch with you.
Sure.
So I think the best we can do today is maybe do a consensus that we're in agreement with it, as long as we can be held. As long as we don't have the liability. We need to figure that out, so. Yeah.
It's, when Amber works on a project, it's fully planned out, and if anyone is to paint. They get this area this color and you go between the lines, it's kindergarten painting.
Right, well, I'm like, as long as nothing, as long as you've painted on the bridge. And we're not painting it someplace else and screwing it to the bridge is what I, this is. Usually mural means that you're painting on the structure, right?
Correct.
That's, that would be the only thing I'd be nervous about.
Yeah, you don't want anything fixed.
Are not gonna say anything about, they don't even mention the graffiti under there on their inspection, so. You know, as long as the concrete is good, that's all they're looking at, so.
So as long as nobody has any objection to.
No, no.
Them moving forward, as long as we, we need to figure out our liability with our insurance company, how we.
Well, most of, most or all of the work could be performed from the ground too, as I recall, up on that north side at least.
Yeah, yeah.
So which would limit some of that liability of somebody falling off a ladder or.
Yeah, yeah, I guess.
Hanging from the girders.
Someone would do the solid get pretty high, they hadn't been sitting on their shoulders.
Yeah, yeah, about shoulder high, it's, that's.
Cause nobody's got that far.
Yeah. Yeah, but the OSHA limit's something like ten feet.
Thank you.
All right, thanks Luke.
But putting like Marty Scott.
Yeah.
That's a good spot for you, Marty.
You're on the board. As long as the button's up. So Scott and Marty and Sam, I think was part of the meeting they had last, yesterday, correct? With the, the architect.
Right.
Engineer, sorry, engineer about the ventilation system, so.
I think we, we had started the meeting about ten, and we wrapped up at noon, so. It, it was a good meeting, we spent about an hour with the architect, and then we just did a walkthrough and were looking at things. So I guess we'll just present what we talked about and what we've, I guess. Found out, what I discovered, I guess, going into this. I was kind of leaning towards that option too, so we got deeper and deeper into it yesterday and talking about it. And especially with Marty and Sam, there's a lot with Marty, cause he's been out in the field. In that area for quite a while, and knows the ins and outs of each one of these different systems that are out there. So we talked about the two-pipe system, which is basically what we have here, we talked about a four-pipe system. And we talked about refrigerant flow system, so. Yeah, I mean, it's like anything else, there's pros and cons to it all, I think at the end of the day, the commission just needs to. Get all the details brought forth to them like we are, and then make a decision on what they want the end product to look like. And how much maintenance is gonna be involved in each one of them systems going forward, so. Like I said, I was kind of leaning towards that four, because I just liked the way it was gonna dress up the building. You know, being able to get rid of these humongous lines and stuff, but by, by noon, I kind of changed my mind. On what the county might be facing in ten or fifteen years from now, from a maintenance standpoint. A lot of the information come from Marty here, so I was kind of letting him talk about. What we found on the walkthrough and, and options that got discussed up in the penthouse, we had a meeting up there. And in the boiler room, all the fine areas.
So, well, um, so first off, I'm gonna reiterate what I said that the last time I was with you guys. I'm not an engineer, so just so you all know that, I'm not here representing any company. Not the one I'm working for, anything like that, I'm just a guy that's got, Scott and I were talking about our gray hair yesterday, the reason why we have it, so. Um, when I kind of visited with Travis at first. I was looking through the report that you had had from the engineer, it's kind of a preamble to what. They're trying to give you all your options, and I just said you, you don't want this one, and. We just a little bit more, and it was kind of like, why? Well, there's a lot of whys, but. Well, that, that kind of equipment has been out for twenty years really, and it has its place. But the places that I've been in with customers that have it, it's ten to fifteen years old. They're starting to see an awful lot of maintenance issues, refrigerant leaks. You have the unit in each room, kind of like you have here now, but there's just a lot really more to. There's a lot more moving parts to it than what a chilled water system like you have, or hot water system like you have. Has, it's got a lot more pieces and moving parts, plus it's proprietary, you know, you can buy this water from the city. And then you own it, those things, you gotta buy parts specifically from the vendor typically, and in fifteen, twenty years. Have they changed the equipment or give, build, give parts, so I'm looking at it more from a, just a long-term investment. And honestly, what you have here is really the Cadillac, even though it needs a little bit of work. It needs to be polished back up, um. There's a lot of things that we can do to tweak what you have, I believe, and have you something that's. Will get you down the road quite ways. Um, the VRF system is great, I'm not saying it isn't, I'm just looking at it from a maintenance perspective of. We work a lot of, I work in a lot of places, and. The biggest challenges we're seeing is like, what else, you can't find help, all this equipment is getting a lot more technical, and. When you put kind of a hybrid in, and I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm just saying, how are you gonna deal with it in twenty, thirty years? Are we gonna have people, right now, you just pump water around, you heat it, boom, that's really about it, that's about as simple as it gets. And yeah, does this thing have some issue, sure it does, but it's been in for thirty years.
Longer than that, so I mean, yeah, I mean.
But it's still functioning, and quite frankly, yeah, you, you know, a chiller's gonna last you fifteen to twenty years. The units over on the PD and the county side over there, they're gonna last fifteen to twenty years. That's what generates the cooling, the boilers are gonna last twenty to thirty years, you're gonna be replacing the high. High wear pieces, but it's only one piece, with the BRF system, there's a lot of pieces, and. Like I said, chilled water and hot water is just still today, the Cadillac of how you do it. Typically, the GRF systems work in buildings like this, that where you don't have chilled water or hot water already in them, so. You know, that they have their place, but I'm not sure that down the road it's for the future taxpayers that. I'm just concerned about maintenance and how you're gonna deal with it, so that was the only reason I made that comment when we, when I saw that the other night. I don't know how in-depth I should really get, but there's an awful lot of things you can do to this system, a lot of them are proposed. On that the engineers report gave you, changing the fan coils. Getting new blowers in them that you can slow down to help with humidification. Adding control valves, right now you have no control valves in these rooms, the thermostat just starts and stops the fan. Well, those things are still heat well, there's nothing stopping the water flow, you know, in the kind of milder weather. To, you still have to keep them out of them, so. The other thing, the challenge you have is with the boiler you have right now, you have to run about a hundred forty degree water minimum, real rust the boiler up. If you change that, then you can get down to a hundred degree water heat on a day like today. And what that allows you to do is when you have these shoulder times of year, you can bring the chiller on sooner. So that uncomfortable for two weeks like it kind of does now, because you gotta switch all these valves. You can automate all that today, in today's world, so it's done all the time. So there's a lot of things you can do here to, to kind of really clean up maybe some of the problems you have. But utilize what you have too, so not saying you're never gonna have trouble with. Anything, but it, it, to me, this is the least amount of maintenance you're gonna see going down the road, what you have, you have a good. I think good stepping stone for the law right now, so. They were talking about a four-pipe system, running two more pipes for heating, so you're gonna have heating and cooling simultaneously. I'm not saying that's a bad idea, but one of the ideas I brought up yesterday was, why don't we. If you're gonna do something, put the new fan coils in, if you want us to stay with chilled water out, but add the heating coils in them. But let's get everything automated and get controls for this building, so it can kind of work better. And maybe you don't even need the four-pipe system, and ventilation was another one too. HRV thing we talked about. We could get some ventilation just brought into the building, there's a couple of different ways to do it, they do have that energy recovery system they proposed, but. Honestly, if, you should be looking at something in the courtroom anyway. There's no fresh air coming in there, you should probably look at maybe changing that unit and getting some ventilation added to that equipment when you're doing it. But we also thought maybe there's plenty of room to work in the attic, maybe add something the other half of, the third floor. And that ventilation will kind of migrate to the rest of the building, you know, I think having. I'm gonna try and get the plans from Scott, but I don't know if they proposed any restroom exhaust fans as part of the report, anybody recall that?
I think it was kind of tied in, tied in with the ERV.
ERV, okay, I mean, there's a couple of different ways to accomplish ventilation, but. The biggest thing is just getting like exhaust fan system and those, then you can kind of pull it to those areas and get some fresh air in there. Quite frankly, like I said, they said it in the report, your windows need to. You know, you open and you got ventilation, so it meets code. Well, I mean, it does, and depending on whether you have how much money you wanna spend, if you don't wanna spend a lot. You say your windows are your ventilation, if you wanna go for a fifty-year thing, well, then maybe we look at another approach.
So we are looking at ventilation too, with this project.
Right, and the ERV is part of that, I think there's other ways to accomplish it, we did discuss that yesterday with engineer, so. And he's gonna kind of broaden his approach on a few things, would he, would they kind of re. Present some options to you guys, it isn't gonna look a lot different than it probably did, but. The other part it was too is, if we're doing all this, you really should get the law enforcement side moved over to chilled water. To at least make provisions for it now, so that's kind of something we talked about yesterday too, is. I, I, like I told them, give you guys a set of engineered plans that you can build off of for thirty years, instead of, here's what we're just doing right now, because. Now's the time to do it, get a little more comprehensive, grant the guy anyway, so.
So since they're talking to new boilers with this, with whatever we do here, we can get to that hundred degree water with those and.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, if you, if you could just get some patrols on the building and stop the water flows and do. Kind of just get this thing modernized in today's world, what, what was done thirty, forty years ago, it worked. Better conditioning and heat every room, and hey, you know, what it was happy, but. If you're looking at doing some upgrades, that would definitely be a big deal. And then also put the law enforcement side on that as well, the boilers, make provisions to do that as part of it, it just makes sense, so.
I guess I hear what you're saying here is, because sometimes when you get things that are not too simple. You can't find anybody to fix them later on, is that what you're saying? You know, if things are simple, it's a lot easier for Scott to maintain it and to know how it runs, and start making it too complicated.
Right.
It's just, nobody knows how it's working, or you got two or three people that do, and you gotta find them all the time.
Yeah, and you have that right now, Sam, I mean, he, he knows all the valves to switch and do that, but. He's gonna come back and switch everything back, and I'm going, we could do that today with digital controls, and it's valving, and it's, it's. It's reliable, it works, and do it from your phone, so. To me, that is not, it's just gotta be part of the project, and it sound like in one of the, the options for the fan coils, that was all included. I don't know if they had a lot of switching and stuff, and the mechanical rooms is part of that, but we kind of covered a lot of the history, so hopefully they'll. Except broaden their approach. But, I don't know, I just, if you said keep it simple, I, I believe personally that that's what you. But I don't know, I just, except keep it simple. I I believe personally that that's what you have here is. It just needs to be kind of tweaked.
So we use these same pipes? That so that doesn't have to get changed or?
No, and we talked about that too, you know, if we haven't faced the approach, maybe. Get your fan coils and stuff, but I told him, I I've been through this enough. You guys need to have some temporary ideas of what. The future holds and if we do just kind of stick with what you have, get controls added, get a new fan coils and do some of the things that. You probably shouldn't be doing anyway, those fan coils are thirty years old. I saw rust on a lot of them yesterday, things like that, um. As part of that phase one idea. Then I think you can kind of see where you land and it may be enough. If not, hey, you've got coils in there for the four pipe system. If you want the best of the best, that's the thing to do. For the forest comfort. So when I told him to to come down, look, I think there's some rooms that have been added walls and I go. You, you gotta get back down here and make sure those are, and he, he said, yeah, I agree. So yeah, they'll probably come back down. Now's the time to make sure we cover all that.
I talked to. When I did a little research last Friday, um. Yes, after Miss Smith here asked me to, I felt obliged, I probably should go out on my own and. Not being so heavily on Marty and Sam, and I talked to one individual in the. Heating and air conditioning this industry for a long time and I didn't tell who I was dealing with. Or who else was on this little committee with me, because I didn't want him to have a biased opinion. He looked right nice, but said Scott, if you put that in, you don't wanna touch it. He said, but make sure if you do go with that system, that that you got it written right in that that bid that. That whoever installs it has to have the knowledge and the ability and the capability to maintain it because of how complicated they can be. And the fact to where Marty's talking about proprietary equipment, we're running that issue right now at the four H building. With the with the furnace that was put in there, however many years ago, I forgot now how many, it wasn't that long ago, but anyway. Um, so the motor's out, but. You can't buy an aftermarket motor for it and his wholesale costs on that motor is fifteen hundred dollars. So that's another thing Marty said we wanna be looking out for when specs are getting drawn up here that they're not just. You know, when they're not locked into some company that they and they only can get these. Controls from or these motors from or what have you, because later on down the road, it's just gonna, this is gonna be a bad deal.
What's special about the motor other than the patent?
That. Whoever made that that Gibson unit, that's it. That's the only, that's the only place you can go get that from. He might build. Sam says he can make it work, but then he has to take liability for rewiring and rewiring the furnace and everything and those contractors don't wanna do that. Obviously shouldn't have to either. You know, just to control board, the motor was just, yeah, he says he's looked, he cannot find that motor anywhere.
Yeah, it sounds a little bit like buying a cheaping chip printer and then those cartridges.
Can we rebuild that motor?
That I never looked into, I guess.
Depends if it burns out electrically, it's very, it could, but most of the motor shops don't even mess with that small stuff.
Another guy in Freeman Wood.
How big of a motor is that?
I.
Yeah, yeah, that's actually. Yeah, disposable size, yeah.
Yeah. So how much is a new furnace then?
That's what he's worked on, but. Forty-five wouldn't be very gross. Probably if you replace the furnace and condensing in them both, they're about twenty five hundred each or. They were a couple of years ago, so everything keeps going, so, yeah. You might go get by the place in the furnace, I don't know. That freon keeps changing and they gotta keep changing out the equipment to keep up with the freon, so I'm not sure where that would land at. I haven't looked into it that far. He, uh, I was kind of getting in the weeds a little bit on that, but yeah, Sam thought he had a motor that he could convert to work, but. That didn't pan out, so we're kind of working on that idea. But.
So it sounds like we should stick with the water system we have.
Travis, I'm not an engineer.
I know.
Okay.
But when, but when somebody says maintenance issues. And if it, if it's working. It's not like this is equipped or this is a style or design that they've thrown out the door and says, don't ever put those in again.
Were to build a new building today, they would have chilled water. That would be. That's what you would do.
Really?
You were to build a brand new building today. Yes.
So having those, um, uh, better control valves and uh, uh, electronic, said an electronic control system. Could make uh, the building comfortable during shoulder seasons.
Would help a lot.
Yeah, cuz I, I, I think that's really, I, you know, a huge, a huge problem. I mean, I, I, I don't think we're so worried about. Um, you know, meeting code as we are about employees having a reasonably comfortable, well ventilated. Safe workspace.
What you run into. I mean, the way it is set up now is it just isn't done that way anymore. At the time, it was a little bit more normal. There's a lot more guys. Just how it was done and back then too, the controls weren't as reliable as they are now. The big benefit you get around a cooler boiler water is you can only, you can't typically start a chiller with. If on a two pipe system, because you're using the same medium, right? So if that water's a hundred, it's gotta be at least down to ninety before you can start the chiller. While that gap is so much narrower, you can get from morning to afternoon and start it. Plus, we can automate it to where you can actually start leaking a little bit of water into the chiller loop, a small loop and gradually bring it down. So you can get started sooner too. So there's a lot of things that you can do that. It just gets you from A to B quicker instead of. Well, let's see if the weather does. Sam come down, switch it tomorrow, it's gonna be, you know, it's just automated and that just completely becomes not an issue.
Effect floor to floor.
If you have, well. Again. That's one of the limitations with the two pipe system. It's kind of all for one and one for all. Um, you have to understand that a third floor might be a little bit warmer. Earlier in the day, but um, with a good, if you had good ventilation. So we can get rid of some of that heat on upper floors or replace it with cooler air through a ventilation type of system, then that kind of becomes not an issue too. So there's the ventilation here would help, you know, they propose that HRV thing, which is great. That has some maintenance issues too, to me, just uh. Regular force ventilation air system, which is common in a lot of buildings. Which we talked about yesterday over the engineer, we're gonna. Put a little bit more on that in his next report to you, how you accomplish that. I think it's simpler, a lot simpler. And you can pull air from the outside today and it's free. It's cool and it's free, so if you're warm upstairs, let's kind of take care of it.
Wouldn't that help the jail? Is there a way to help the jail when they're like ninety degrees?
Another animal. I, that's another discussion.
So you're talking the jail that's in the courthouse?
Yes.
So that's completely.
Well, I don't know that that was really addressed in you guys' report, was it?
I don't think so.
And I'm going, I, so I did, we didn't look at that yesterday, but yeah, could you, could it be part of this project? Absolutely.
It should be. I thought it was. It should be because it needs a ventilation system.
I didn't recall seeing anything in there, I'm going.
That was, that was one of the, the problems that I, I thought that uh, four pipe system could help. You know, or we could cool, we've got mainly have shoulder season problems with stratification in the. Third floor courthouse and the rest of the third floor actually. And and down in the jail, that's a whole different deal and that's in my mind, that's where I thought for. Four pipes, four pipe system could be a significant help. Now, and and as far as refrigerant leaks, is that, that's just because the newer materials that in the piping that goes out to the. Fan coils from, from central or, or uh, or used to solder bike, you know, and it'd be a. Almost a forever situation, but some of the newer materials, you have trouble distribution then with.
Honestly, A, we don't have people that are skilled to do that kind of work really anymore.
Yeah.
Like I used to do.
Yeah.
The other part of it is now they're going to, everything's quick connect.
Right.
With all race.
And it is those connection, connections, the old rings that are leaking.
For a new technology.
What are you finding when you go find a problem, Marty?
Well, that's usually.
At those old ring, old rings or?
Yeah, or you know, just a poor joint, ninety percent of the time you leaks are. Just they were bad solder joints or you.
Sure.
Cleaner.
Sure.
You run equipment with old rings.
Understood.
So. Again, I'm kind of old school.
And it's the other thing, is there a, an old ring every hundred feet of pipe or is it?
Yeah, cuz it comes in twenty foot lengths, you're gonna have a twenty one foot, I think it is, you're gonna have mechanical fittings every.
Right, wow, I can see where that can be.
You know, soldering in my mind still today is, is, but it's the labor and the skill sets to.
Correct.
And the time, you know, that's why we've done the plumbing is all get to the.
Packs.
Same, and commercial plumbing is going to the crimped to, to like three inch copper.
Right.
So it's just labor and people and skill sets and.
Uh, on the third floor, how much of our. Heat problems up there, too hot problems? Do you think are a result of, are we getting some radiation down from the attic for that attic gets super hot and in the summertime and. So with more ventilation, uh, good power.
Oh, would help, you know, typically these, these buildings like this have a chimney effect.
Right.
All that wants to go up, you open one, go up there, blow your back, you know, it's just typical of any building that's got multiple stories, so. You know, the biggest thing is either trying to get rid of it or replace it with something better.
Right.
And if we can exhaust the warmer and bring cooler in, the holder is gonna fall. So it just, you can't get that effect going and with open stairwells and all that, we can certainly make it better. Is it perfect? The only perfect way to do it is run a duct in every room. And try and control that moisture that's coming in there temperature wise as well, so that gets very complicated and it's expensive, so. It's nothing I'm not gonna check what.
Well, don't, don't think that that's the case, so.
I'm not, that's one too, yes, so.
I haven't dealt a lot with ERVs, um, I guess my first experience with them was at Sezak and uh. The two we had up there were getting pretty old, so we hadn't replaced last summer, but I don't know if we would have even done that if it hadn't been for the COVID money that was out there and we had to spend it COVID related, so. We went through from the approach of putting better systems in to bring in more fresh air to. To mitigate air throughout the building, but to me, they're just, to me, it seems complicated. I don't understand. All what they're telling me and all these moving parts and how it does this and that and I don't know if at the end of the day, it really does what they say it's gonna do. As far as bringing in fresh air, Marty and I kept talked about the yesterday, so you know, I know they're all for uh, the engineers and these big companies and they're selling the. Ton of these things, but I just, I don't know if it's. I know something's gotta be done and get a little more fresh air in here. I understand that part of it, but.
You know, honestly, I think you guys are on good footing after what we had yesterday. What they presented you was. I'm right, yeah, it makes sense to me, but I think there's some things that. I was glad we had a chance to visit yesterday. Hopefully they can broaden their horizons a little bit. I'm just approaching it more from future skill sets and. You know, what people, just keep it simple and the HRV thing, I just. When they get you all the information, we can certainly sit down again. I, I'm not trying to steer you anyway, one way or another, but. It's just been through the school hard knocks enough. I kind of know the end result and some of the stuff and. There are ways to look at things one bit. There, there's just a lot of deferred maintenance that happens with certain kinds of systems. That's what I'm afraid that you're gonna run into if you get too complex, so.
The ventilation system that they were talking about, would you stay with that? And under your, I know you're not an expert, uh, you're not an engineer, uh.
What I would say is there's a simpler way to accomplish the very same thing, thing we talked about was putting two. Uh, BX systems up in the attic, one to replace it in the courthouse, one to cool the other half of third floor. They'd have the capabilities of bringing this pressure there, basically just, you're just tweaking a damper. Depending on what your temp is outside and with ERVs, if you get a little more complicated, they're bringing it in and blending with this and shooting back to you. I think what Marty was talking about was more of the fact of the old school as well, but tried and true, proved way.
What, what's?
Two systems would be bringing in a certain amount of fresh air, yeah, injecting it into the third floor. Um, and pulling it through the bathrooms. And then you just have natural filtration down through the. Down through the building, you, the units to be running in these rooms, that would be drawn there down and into the rooms.
I don't know if you guys were, did you guys see the email from the architect?
Yeah.
It was, he was a little concerned about adding things on the roof structure, leave, think it's.
He's a little out over his skis right now. So there's other ways to get it done, so.
I, I just hit the pause. Had equipment down on the ground level, more stuff running up the side of this building, you know.
We're not, we're not there yet, so.
Cause I mean, if, if, if there's, I guess I'm looking at here is it's. Dollar signs here and you know, if we can do something with ventilation and get the same effect. For less money, is that what you're thinking too?
In my mind, what you would be doing is you wouldn't be doing anything that you would retrace your steps on.
Okay.
Now, if, if, if you get to a point where you're going. Maybe we're not quite there with the ventilation, if you wanna add or ERV added, but I'm going, I think. You know, when we approach something, you think about the people in the building, right?
Correct.
Certain rooms that have two people. And, and you gotta look at, we look at CO2 levels, right? We can monitor that now. Well, we can drive ventilation by doing that. You can certainly do that in courtroom easy. Your higher mass areas, you can, you can have a sensor in there to tell you what's going on. There's acceptable levels, you get over seventy, eight hundred, people start getting a little sleepy, that type of thing. So the only way to ensure that that never happens is to bring fresh air into that room.
Right.
Well, if you got one or two people, do you really need that? Well, you got the window, right? I'm not saying that's, but that's what you wrestle with in, in buildings like this, with what you have.
The hard part is, the hard part is most of us can barely lift the windows together.
Well, I'm not, yeah, again, I'm not trying to make light of it or minimize it. I'm just saying, this is the canvas.
Right, but nobody's gonna open a window on a twenty below degree day or a hundred and ten.
Yeah, I think if you get everything kind of modernized and get kind of to the newer technology, I think people will see a difference, but again, I don't. It's not gonna be perfect.
But we can take steps and.
That's right, that, and that's kind of the, where my, I thought yesterday, it's like, look, okay. But nothing that they propose is on bounds or bad. I, I'm just saying, I'm looking at the laundry list, I'm where I start. That's, that's me, so.
You know, a point that Marty made yesterday, I thought about like the treasurer's office, you know. Years ago, it was only two or three people there and now there's five, so you know, that might be. Uh, situation where you might want that ERV in that room.
And buy a smaller one just for that.
Right, yeah.
Instead of doing the whole building.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the other issue is that we have a public building here with a lot of people going in and out and. Um, you know, we're also in the midst of a pandemic and probably not the last one and. Uh, you know, so there, I, for me, there's, you know, I think also about issues of employee health. And just the number of people who are coming in and out of the building constantly and a certain amount of air exchange in places where. You know, we've got a fair number of employees, but in addition, we've got public coming in and out. Um, those are the places that I think, uh, you know.
Every time they open the door, they're ventilating. So I mean, there's a lot of things to consider there and again, I, you know, you can always plan for the worst too, but. I, I just think you guys have something to work with here, isn't. The worst thing, it just needs some love and. And you, you got something you can build off of too. I don't think that. You know, what you have here is going backwards, might need to stretch the imagination, so.
So if we start with a two pipe system. You get a few years down the road and go, yeah, we could do a little better. We could always add a four, the fourth to.
Absolutely, that was what I would kind of thought about.
But I think when we talked yesterday, you were proposing. And these fan coils, you know, it's come with that second coil in there, right? In case you get to that point. We need to get that, we need to.
You alluded to that earlier.
Then the coils there.
You're changing it anyway, so.
There is ventilation system in this building.
Yeah, you have the plans digitally.
I tried to send it, I tried that blueprint, you sent it to me, I tried to email it off, it must have been too large.
Courthouse blueprints that we're talking about, yeah.
Yeah.
So where's the ventilation?
Well, if you look in there, if you look in your bathrooms, you look up on third floor in the rooms, you look up towards the ceiling and see it all real old nineteen eleven register in there. If you go up and add it and look, there's a duck work around it's all almost all the way around that building. I had to go do a little more research, but I believe those probably all tie into there and through, there was two, um. Places, two penetrations through the roof were a really large diameter. Duck went through and I suppose back in the day that was their ventilation, you know, and then blew caused a draft. Yeah, that just can pull there up out.
Right.
You know, and that's ducking still exist up there, I don't know if there's any way to. Oh, I can get that tied back in, put fans in it to help draw.
That half full of dust by now. Cause as much dust as is in that attic.
So that that old duck work is up there and that and you can still see those huge penetrations below the roof line.
Well, do you have a direction then Scott to go?
What's that?
Do you have a direction? When this, what this architect or or engineer?
He wanted me to get back to him and schedule another meeting for next week. So, which I have to contact him today and get that set up, kind of want to talk to you guys first before, I mean, before I made the call.
The one question I have is sounds like in the ventilation, your tires have just moved in here. My condition says I need it cleaned also.
Well, everything's filtered, regardless of what you do in today's world, if you're bringing outdoor air in, you're gonna filter.
Other than that open doorway.
Quite frankly, if you get to the point where you can bring air in, then you can pressurize the building.
And blow her out.
Blow out. So that's really in my mind what you want to turn working to, either do it mechanically through an exhaust fan or and you can actually vary your exhaust fan speed. As opposed to the doors opening, closing, now we can get that, today's world, we can. It's a little harder to do here, cause you don't have a best of deal, but I mean, it's dual. So there's a lot of advancements that. Like the bells and whistles we have in our car, some of them we probably don't need, but there are some ones that are really nice, yeah, and that's kind of. What I would kind of compare it to really.
But my own building out there, it's a, that's a, it's a two pipe system, four zones, one zones in floor heat. And uh, one's an upstairs room and uh, we used shutters to. On the, on the forest air side to take care of that and that that building's pressurized and they've got three garage doors in it. Which allows allows a lot of water of of air to be blown out just through the gaps in those, so.
Yeah.
It's sort of like this building in that respect, only it's a lot newer and a lot smaller, but there's. Essentially four zones that we put in, they're all electronically controlled with uh, digital. Thermometers and and air quality sensors in each zone. And so it's sort of what you're driving at is kind of sort of like what I already own up there.
Yeah, yeah, that's just kind of the thing today, for me, there's the job that goes in that doesn't have digital controls on it.
Yeah.
There's no other way to do it anymore, really, pneumatics and all things I started out on or.
Yeah.
I mean, whatever we do. I just, for the employees and stuff that are, of those of us are in the building all day long. When you get the mail delivery person that comes in and goes, man, the air in this building is just stagnant, how do you work in here all day? You know, it's like, I just want to make sure that we improve that, so that we get some good fresh air movement and like Phyllis said, maybe. You know, some cleaning of the air and stuff, it just. It's just like, it's just, yeah, like it's stagnant, it just doesn't move, even with people going in and out all day, it just. Most of us can't lift those windows to open them and, you know, on a hot day. We don't want to, and then you have my office where, you know, we've. We've had the pest control people out several times to try to take care of wasps, but. They're like in the walls and then we open our windows and pretty soon we've got, you know, five, six wasps flying around in the office and. So, I mean, there is that.
I I think getting it so it's automatically what we want, not depending on on opening windows to.
Yeah.
It's where we want to drive.
Agree.
Yeah.
Agree, I I I don't, I. Not saying that's yes.
Yeah.
I'm just saying there are ways to get ventilation in this building and there's a couple, three different ways to do that, so. But you have that information or you'll have more, I need to give you a budget pricing a lot of that. I'm not sure some of this, it's pretty fluid out there right now, so.
That's what they're working on, because those are October numbers.
And I mean, I can do the first square foot thing to you right now, but. Let me get the bill sometimes kind of over here right now, cause everybody's really busy, so everybody's a little independent. So planning for a project either summer of next year, year after, that's what you guys are thinking. If you want to do next year, you better get going now. Or if you want to take your time a little bit, then you better say twenty twenty four.
Well, we want the right, we want to do it right, we only want to do it once.
Yeah, yeah, but I would just stress to the, your engineers that they brought in there, that's what we, I think we accomplished yesterday.
That's the, I think that there's key things about this building, like the central stairway that that acts is a. Is a a chimney, you know, that's one key thing, having a. Big attic above that I was wondering how much effect that would have on on that third floor. Uh, cooling problem, especially in the summer and in the shortest. Actually, the heat's worse there in the winter on third floor, because second floor, the drafts, they'll turn their heat up. The chimney's up to third floor and they've got their windows open in the winter.
A lot of times we have the thermostat set at eighty five in our office just to stay comfortable in our desks, because. The wind is coming in the balls, the windows, so then we're just cold.
And that's part of trying to pressurize a building without counteract.
Right.
A lot of that's the thing is, like I said, not having best of deals here makes it a little bit more difficult, cause then a lot, well, the doors open, but.
You don't want like the dome used to be.
So the outside coming in and the inside pushing out.
Right.
And that's kind of really what ventilation gets you or what you should be working towards.
And it could be a pretty small structure, that's the trouble too, like in the Coker House, I think you've been out to. To the house that Howard built and that central. Stairway thing in that place just made it impossible to keep it comfortable everywhere and that's the same sort of issue we have here.
It is, doors are open.
Yeah.
You know, all day, so most of them anyway.
No way to close them.
Well, I mean, that's so. What you have here can maybe definitely be made better, but. So there's just some things they're gonna expand on that I think are important, you know.
We can want it quite a bit better.
Well, I think we can get there.
Sounds good.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much.
All right, we'll do, thanks.
Do you have anything else, Scott?
Sure.
Lift another, lifting in the canopy out here in the trees, we talked about that. Yep, so I had Harding come by yesterday, he said the best bang for your buck would be. Just to hire him, hire him his day rate, he'll come in here and get them all, his day rate's forty five hundred. So they haven't been each tree out there. And it's, it's more than I was expecting, but I think it's money well worth spent, if we can get that canopy up, see if we can get the grass to grow up front here. As you saw today, we lost significant chunk of tree on the boulevard there. That was splitting because of the weight of the branches, but.
Does he see significant amount of trimming, I mean? To get him for a hold, I know how fast they work.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna call and talk to him, cause I I never thought after he's gonna well up, what if you're only here four hours, a half a day? You know, and you cut that rate in half, you know, we need to, you're gonna be here four eight hours, he was looking at the ones on the boulevard too, he said they don't need much. But need a little bit here and there, get up in the top and get the dead stuff out and what have you.
Are we able to do anything with the trees in the boulevard, those are not ours?
It looks like they have in the past. I'll call the city and ask them. Yeah.
One up today, the city.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, cause I I guess I didn't, I thought it was our responsibility, then Joan texted me, so one of me she called the state, so called the city and said, no, it's our deal, I said, okay. So I just toned it off so they can get in there, get it cleaned up.
So I would think if they got the boulevard could be theirs. But I can't see it.
I don't have a problem maintaining them, I just, are they gonna have a problem with us maintaining?
I'll ask and see, I mean, when I look out there, it looks like some of that stuff was hanging at a low cost across the public walk and. We ever did the trees for the courthouse last year, which was a poor job done, looked like they reached over and cut some of them too, it just looks like their work over there. But I'll check with the city to be sure.
Okay.
What their rule is on that.
And you're right, Harding did. We had to treat that, it could take down all the part, because next to the house. I mean, they dropped that so fast, you. You know, they went up and trimmed it all the way down and it was fast.
Yeah.
I'm sure they weren't there twenty minutes.
Yeah, they did one in our yard one time, that was a good full size tree and I bet fifteen, twenty minutes tops, yeah.
They had her down, they got a move truck, they went up, kept cut down and drop her.
I used, yeah, I used to get Gary's out, he retired. And so I started shopping around again last year and Hardiken was by far lower than anybody else in the area.
I just, did somebody buy Gary's out or?
Yeah, Joel, Joel, somebody bought him out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Forty five hundred, if they're gonna. They, I mean, it might be cheap, I'm not saying it isn't, but I don't know how much they got to cut.
I don't know.
They think you could do it all a day then?
Yeah, he's pretty sure lady could.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen a pile they've made in a day, we don't have enough trees to make that size.
Of course, that's one thing, they're all in a way, it's trimming it up, I mean, for getting rid of it too.
Maybe the way to go is just pay him his hour, hourly rate.
What's he get an hour?
I'll have to ask, I didn't dwell in that far, but I can ask him all those questions.
Yeah.
You know.
But he already said he he's gonna be cheaper to go to forty five hundred than hourly, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They seem to have a way of making that work out.
Slow down?
Yeah.
Easier to fill up your work.
And yeah, I guess I had to find about.
I don't know how that works, yeah.
The hauling away, that's.
Yeah, they gotta do that too, I mean, they gotta, you know, grind it up all the way or whatever, but that does add to the cost.
Yep.
I mean, he dropped a tree for us, we we haul it.
That's true, my class where I was on the hill.
Yeah.
So do you want me to pull that motor?
There is, but. We don't know how old that furnace is.
I'll have to look, I think I got it documented that I did some research on it the other day.
Is it like thirty, twenty?
No, it's, it's, I'm gonna guess fifteen, ten to fifteen. But. Um, I need to look first again before I decide.
He would at least look at it and tell us if he can fix it or not.
Cause I could pull it out of there, definitely pull the motor and send it up to that gentleman.
Yeah.
If you gasman repairs that small stuff.
He repairs all of them, but and I gotta run up there anyways, so. Freeman?
Oh, it's Ducky's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If they can't find the motor, I was just wondering if he could rebuild it.
Yeah, might be able to.
Maybe he'll find the motor, who knows?
Yeah.
Sometimes those guys have sources.
Yeah.
I haven't rebuilt motors usually, usually by the time we get down to about five horse, he says, nah, it's not. This isn't, this, this is getting too small for me to economically do it at least.
Well, we can tell him though, it's fifteen hundred bucks. Cause usually, you know, two, three hundred bucks, you could buy a half horse motor off the shelf. So then it's usually a throwaway, but this is.
I wonder what's what's special about this one, it's probably VFD rated, but uh. What what else is special about it? Other than the patent.
I'm sure they changed the RPMs and.
Who knows?
Did just enough to make it special.
Yeah. Is it a VFD motor, you know?
They do not know that. I know it looks different on the end than any motor I've ever seen. Just back end of it, just looks totally different than any motor I've ever seen.
So they did it just to make sure that there was.
Right.
Yeah.
Basically.
No.
And and it's just a fan motor?
Yep, supply fan.
I know when we replaced ours a few years ago at home and it was almost a thousand dollars and that was, that was a few years ago.
Yeah, Sam said he can make it work, but he doesn't want to take lab lab bill and rewire the whole furnace.
Yeah.
So.
He's worried about liability of what, burning up the motor or?
Yeah, just liability he's taking on as as a contractor, you know, because. Or if, you know, if he is doing it in his own house or his own garage, that'd be one thing, but.
What what brand is the?
Gibson.
It's a Gibson.
No. Wait a minute. Don't quote me on that, like I think the Gibson's the one in the office. I have to look at my records and see. Yeah, I know the Gibson's the one in the office.
But maybe we, maybe we have to seriously look about a different furnace too, cause that thing is loud.
Yeah.
That, that I don't know.
That's the, that's the fan motor in that furnace that's went out.
Yeah.
In the, in the big room.
Yeah, and the one that's in the, in the janitor's closet.
Yeah, the motor is likely a different brand than, you know, that's made by Baltimore or somebody.
Right.
Under a special.
Yeah.
Uh, sub, sub name or something, but the the furnace could be a whole different brand.
Yeah.
There may be. Choices to be made there.
I'll have to look at the furnace, I cannot recall what the name would is.
Replace the whole squirrel, squirrel occasionally, whole smear, my.
You know, I I would think I'll call Sam about that, but I'm pretty sure you already weighed that option.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, then it'd probably have to get a whole new control board and. Yeah, it's not like the old days.
Yeah, I know.
Like the one out in the bigger room, that's old school there.
Yeah.
Still got oil cups.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Gets more likes, Marty says, things is getting more and more complicated. Or take care, that's all I gotta wanna take up you guys' time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Joint jurisdiction. Does everybody, uh, the mayor sent out an email wondering kind of what to put on an agenda? Does anybody have any? Pros, cons, I mean, do, I mean, how do you put that on an agenda, pros and cons of joint jurisdiction and are the problems that we're having? How do you word that?
Long term. Planning and adjusted adjustments to joint jurisdiction.
You get that, Carrie? Cause I'll have you send her the email, so.
Long term planning and adjustments.
Yeah. Said, sound good, sounds great. It came from up there somewhere.
Jumped up and got it though.
Yeah, we could use. I couldn't do it again in two minutes.
So then, do you want me to send an email to?
I think you can reply to that one that I sent you. Right, or does it need to just go directly to her?
Okay.
Or or her and John.
Okay. And the question was also.
That was the, that's the request I put in. I wanted to, I wanted both more full boards.
Okay.
In the big room, recorded and televised, I was getting pushed back on that.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. So hopefully it happens.
No, I think it. It's too many side comments and thoughts happen.
Everybody have anything else?
That are, that are transportation.
At our, at our transportation public meeting last night, when we had seven show up, seven or eight?
Yeah, was, it was a small turnout, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
But they were engaged, so everybody had questions, thoughts and everything. And we did have, uh. The facilitators are going to take some of those comments as well, some others picked up in the last week to update. There were, for instance, they had, uh, bridge, uh, poor condition bridge and abandoned bridges that, that. That we'd already addressed. And so they're going to adjust those numbers in total. Their work so far is really based upon. Work that's already been done and, uh. Data that they've gotten from state highway. And, uh, one of the, one of the more useful charts they had was, was accident reports over the last five years. Uh, fully a third of them are essentially deer strikes, animal vehicle, uh, interactions. So only one fatality on our system in that five years. And that particular chart was pretty interesting. It was pretty, yeah, I thought, I thought it really showed that in general, our, our system is. In pretty good shape, at least it, it's something that, uh, our residents adapted too well. To, uh, keep the total incident reports down, so. So I felt pretty good about the thing myself. Well, I have another public meeting coming up in the fall, early fall. And so it'd be. Like, you know, all of us, if you'd want to cycle through, at least have a look at when they do that presentation.
So when you said seven people, was that seven people not on the board, just public? Okay.
Yeah, there's seven civilians were there.
Would that address any of the, I don't know if you've received comments about the low road. This side of the golf course.
Oh, yeah, Burbank Road.
Yeah.
That didn't have any.
I've received phone calls lately. Um, and there's been possible accidents with people being run into or.
Astrid accidents or?
Basically, I was asked if there was any way to have a no passing area there. Because the minute they're off the twenty-five or twenty mile per hour coming down the hill, they speed up to. Whatever. And there is a thirty-five mile per hour, but they're going fifty or sixty, so.
Yeah, you know, um, Altech Engineering has a, um, a, a whole site. Where, uh, they're asking everybody to report those things. Um, it's at altech.com. And it's what backslash Clay County. MTP, Master Transportation Plan. Um, and so that's the kind of thing that they're really looking for us to report. Um, so anybody who knows anything about an intersection or a road that's problematical. There are, uh, there's a, a, a place there where you can actually drop a pin and write a comment. This is a place where this happens.
Or, or, or have a stretch of road that you'd have a comment. You can draw either a line or drop a pin.
And it, it's, it's really easy to use. Um, and if you don't want to do that.
Yeah, it was a first name basis in all calls, and so I don't know how to report back to them.
I think you could just put it yourself on that you've received several calls that this is a concern and that we need to change the speed limit. Um, the discussion last night was that, um, everybody in the room seemed to think that speed limits were reasonable. And one person in fact said, I'm very concerned that you keep the speed limits the same. I have a bypass, yeah. So, so that was kind of really, really interesting. But if there's a speed limit problem, um, you know, if you get on.
Speed limit or no pass, if you may pass and what happens is people speed up, pass.
Yep. And they'll, they'll, they'll.
Area down there with kids and people crossing the street, so it's. It's dangerous.
We were actually asked, weren't we at the Rotary meeting that, on that lower road to increase the speed?
Oh, really?
Yeah. I'm not gonna mention any names, but.
That was to increase or de?
Increase.
Increase, okay.
Cause he thought that was.
Somebody's late to work. It's in Sioux City from time to time.
It was a retired person who. We, in, in a certain stretch, we did, yeah.
Yeah, a couple of years ago. I'm pretty sure we did that.
Yeah, we did.
We got LTAP to help us with that analysis.
Yeah, yeah.
But in, any place where there's a problem.
Section in there, we lowered it.
They want us to report it.
Right.
By those houses.
If there's a flooding problem, any kind of problems, they, they want everybody who knows about the problem to identify it on their map. And, um. Yeah.
We can easily double line that.
Yeah.
In the, in the, by the houses and the.
I actually don't think that'd be about that good. I never thought about it before.
Double lines are fine until you get a lot of tractor traffic going back and forth there and somebody wants to pass. Cause you get caught in the double line for a mile of no passing. People are gonna be upset.
There's road rage.
Oh, yeah. The mile, the only spot I wouldn't mention is the, where the Meckling Road goes to the bluff. Yeah, that intersection.
That T intersection that we did, we. It's right. We, we know, but the, the broad solution is to put a T intersection in at some point. And actually, the, the folks, the engineers. And, uh, well, the engineers from the state highway department suggested that, yeah, it's an issue there, but you know, there. Really have been no accidents there. And you may cause accidents by changing. People are used to negotiating it the way it is today. And if you make a change, it could make it temporarily at least more dangerous. And, uh, with the zero, zero incident count right there, they were saying, well, if it's not broke, maybe we have not to fix it.
It's tough to tell who's got the right away though.
I know. And the other one, the one that, that's tougher, I think, is the one west, a mile west of there where the bluff road. Converges with the, the road going up over the bluff.
But they at least have stop signs on them.
Have a stop sign there. Boy, if you have a heavy vehicle coming from the west, that one's, that one's a tough one. Uh, sometimes there's not enough time, you know, you don't see, see far enough over the hill to really have a good merge time.
That comes from the north, kind of scary.
Yeah, if they put in a T intersection in there coming down that hill, that would be, that would be a really tough intersection to negotiate with the heavy loads. It'd be like the bluff road going over the hill up there past the dump.
Yeah, that's a bad spot there too.
So.
Landfill, please. I said landfill, please.
I knew you always said landfill. Have something, somebody kept saying dump. I said, you know, Phyllis was here. And I finally did, I did correct it. I said landfill, but I don't remember who was, where I said, somebody kept saying that.
But I think the Burbank Road suggestions, we should get that onto that.
Yeah. But you're right, you get tractor traffic and it gets very, and that's not a very wide road, you know? Especially if you have a very big piece of equipment. It's hard to. Get over.
That's, that's that.
That's all the agenda, so.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
I have motion in a second. All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign for adjourned. Thank you.